Important. But that's what the, that's what the owner of the SOLA project that got voted at town meeting told us when we said to him, "You have no authority to bring parties into an agreement that are not part of the agreement, and the person who owns the property is not a party to the agreement." There's no signature of the property owner. We're only talking about personal property. Now, to answer your question, I was on the finance committee at the time. In order for the Board of Selectmen to negotiate one of these agreements, the town has to vote to allow them to do it.
That's correct.
And as we know, what happened this last year, that authority got renewed. Well, it expired at the June town meeting of this year. We realized that because we knew we were going to be talking to you again, and we went, we looked back to say, "When did it get authorized?" We realized it had been, it expired.
Right.
It wasn't on the annual town meeting warrant. So, we notified you on our special, "We gotta get permission from the town." We got that permission. That's the only thing we asked for because we weren't ready to take these. Now, subsequent to all of that, we met with you a couple of times.
Yes.
The threat of legal action against the town, you know, quite frankly, you're not the first gentleman to threaten to sue us, and you're not the first lawsuit we've ever had. The fact of the matter is, when the town voted initially to allow the Selectmen to negotiate the agreement...
This was already signed?
They had to do it. No, I'm talking before that.
Before that.
Negotiate, the word negotiate. The Board of Assessors were not involved in that negotiation.
Uh, we, we met and we went through the rates, that's how we came up with them.
You may have met, but, I was on the finance committee at the time.
Right.
And I went to her and said to her, "Carol, what is this about?" And she says, "I don't really know," because we weren't part of it.
But we didn't make these rates up.
Okay.
These rates...
I'm not talking, I'm only talking the process now, not the rates or anything else. So, when, so those were signed. And initially, when I came on the board in 2015, questions had been risen, had arisen about the contents of the contracts that had been signed. The board at the time, and I was a member, I had just come back, my colleagues felt that, "We signed the agreements, just let them go." I said to them, "They, they have, they're not in compliance, they have not been voted and approved at a town meeting, so we need to do that." Then there was a, a real discussion and a lot of investigation on the part of Town Council and the Town Moderator, who also is an attorney, about the proper way to bring these agreements before a town meeting.
Sure.
The Town Moderator did a lot of research because it's not really covered statutorily, but if there is not a statute to cover it, and DOR issues a regulation, it takes, has the same power as a statute. So, based on that information, we found out from the Town Moderator, and there was agreement with Town Council, "This is what you have to do." My colleagues at the time still didn't want to do it. Quite frankly, I carried on until they agreed to let me do it. So, that's how I took the first one to town meeting because we had the information we needed. I had spoken to Mrs. Borogad. We made it clear, "This does not include real estate taxes." That one got passed. The other two got tabled because I didn't have the information. And I know there was discussion then about who was gonna own it, and I said, "I'm not going to town meeting if I don't even know." So, that's why those got tabled. We're now at the point of, we have permission to negotiate from the town meeting vote. We have repeatedly asked you to strike reference to real estate taxes. We actually have one approved project in place. We know what the SOLA developer is doing with the landowner, okay? That's because the agreement he has kinda mirrors what's in this.
They're the same.
So, what I'm saying to you is, the one live pilot agreement we have, the SOLA developer has made an arrangement with the landowner, outside of us.
Correct.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yep.
So, both of them are paying what their assessment for taxes is, okay? It's not one minus the other equals the, you know, a small amount, no, that's not what it is. So, if in fact, that's the hitch in this whole thing, and the attorneys for the, I'll say, potential owners, uh, wanna pursue it, you know where we're coming from, we know what the solution is. We wanna work with you, we wanna give you a pilot agreement. But the arguments you're making, we've already heard, and we already told the other person, this is how it is. Now, quite frankly, he found a solution, which is fine. As a town, I don't see that we could treat you any differently and say to you, "It's okay for you to net him out," and leave him reimbursing the property owner for the property taxes. He found a solution that works for the town. If he didn't wanna make that arrangement with that landowner, it came to us, there would be two lawsuits because I'm sure the property owner would've gone to him also and said, "Wait a minute." So, you know, it would've been a circus of lawsuits. But basically, that's where we're coming from. I'm the only person left in, on the Board of Selectmen. I wasn't involved with the negotiations, didn't get involved with any of this until I came back to the board in 2015, and had to convince my colleagues, "These must go to town meeting, and I will take full responsibility for presenting them to the residents," as long as I have everything I need. I have worked with Mrs. Borogad, we've gone to training together, we've sat through the same meetings, we've had people come in and meet with the Board of Selectmen and explain the entire process. And everything that we have gotten so far, right through tonight, is, "Real estate equals landowner, personal property equals SOLA." That's where the responsibility lies. So, we're not, we're not in a position to make any changes on that because we active, we actually have an approved, active pilot agreement.
Well, every, everything that you've just said really talks about a process that you've gone through, because SOLA's new in this town to everybody, it's been a learning experience.
Yes.
Okay? And you went through great detail explaining that process, that learning process that you went through, and you also gave a description of a very small array, which is less than 10% the combined size of the two that I'm talking about. So, it's a much different issue of magnitude.
No, no.
But a pilot is a pilot.
Okay.
And I just feel like the precedent was already set, and thank you for taking it up at that time. I know it wasn't easy for you or for the town, but the precedent's already been set. So, my concern would be granting you this agreement with all these mentions of real estate property taxes, we're gonna have the previous gentleman right at our door saying, "Why weren't accommodations made for me?"
I can't comment on how he managed it, but I can tell you that we have a binding agreement with the town of Dayton.
No, you don't.
Well, she...
So, that, that's why I'm saying, and it's, it's not a threat of a lawsuit, that's, if I said that the wrong way, I, I apologize. What I meant to say is to have competent legal counsel, and I don't mean no disparaging Rob, but he doesn't specialize in this.
I'm not competent.
Okay?
Sorry, Rob.
But, but, on your side of the table, as well as ours, okay, who specialize in this, to look at this and say, "Is this a binding agreement or not?" Because our attorneys have looked at it, believe it is. But it goes even beyond that. The reason is because this specific document that we do believe in is binding, provides for a solution to the exact scenario that you're talking about. If you look at Section 10, it makes it very clear, this, what we put into that amendment, that if at any point, real estate taxes are required to be removed from the pilot, then the total amount combined cannot exceed what's already agreed to in this document. That's what it says. Your town signed that, your Selectmen signed that, and at that point, it was not required to go for town meeting ratification. In fact, it was...
No, that's not true. It always was.
But how can it be binding if they did not have the explicit authority to negotiate those agreements? So, what's binding about it?
We put, we put this, we put this, okay, attempted to put this on the town meeting warrant, okay, at one point, and there was a big discussion at town meeting, and it was called as out of order. And the specific point made by your moderator was that it's inappropriate for pilots to be ratified by town meeting. Later on, Dayton changed its mind...
No, wait a minute, no, no, I'm gonna correct you on that. When, first of all, it got signed. The process I just described to you, okay, you get permission from the town, the board, permission from the town to negotiate pilot agreements. We did that. Then you negotiate the agreement.
This was signed before that?
No. What I'm saying to you is, the directive that came out from DOR was prior to that original board signing these.
So, what you're saying then is anybody...
What I'm saying is, like in math, order of operations?
Sure. Okay.
There is a certain procedure that you must follow, up to and including, once you get the document, there's a whole number of steps. There is a process to get this on town meeting floor. When that statement was made originally, it's because the whole process to get it before a town meeting had not been made clear.
That's correct.
One of the, now, and I'm not criticizing the Town Council, I am not criticizing the Town Moderator. Town Council, for the most part, and maybe Rob does too, is there a law that covers this? Is there a statute? They look to the laws, they look to their resources and everything, and that's what was being followed. So, I'm not faulting Town Council, saying they gave us wrong information. They were looking for a statute and couldn't find it. But what we found out and what was pointed out, and the reason why, after that, didn't make it to town meeting. The Moderator took it upon himself to find out if there is no statute, is there a DOR regulation, because those regulations have the power of a statute. So, that's how we finally got the original that got approved, and the two you presented to town meeting. Your two came to town meeting, they were tabled because I didn't have the information I needed to get up there to convince the people they should vote for it. That's why that happened.
What, okay, but really what you're saying, okay, is that this agreement is invalid?
Without a town meeting vote, absolutely.
Okay? And we disagree with that, and that's why the lawyers need to talk about this at this point, okay? There's nothing else I can do. I'm here to tell you that we will make all the changes you want in this. We will remove every reference to personal, to real estate taxes, uh, we'll change it, we'll modify it, we'll do whatever you like, but at the end of the day, the total amount of tax for both real estate and personal property needs to be the same. And the reason is simply that this was relied upon. Your Selectmen sat in this room, they negotiated with us, and they signed an agreement. We relied on that. We went out and we spent $12 million on these two projects to build them, expecting that we would have a fixed guaranteed certain amount that we negotiated and understood. Now, you're saying, "Forget about what the Selectmen did, they weren't authorized."
No, I didn't say that.
Therefore, this isn't binding.
No, they were authorized.
Then this is a binding agreement.
The step that's missing is town meeting approval.
That didn't exist when...
Yes, it did. Yes, it did.
Then why did you put it on your, on your warrant for the first time and add that there, subsequent to this, and then say, "Oh, now we need to redo it"? The first time that was on the warrant was that meeting that you had, subsequent to signing this. It was not a requirement at the point, and nobody could tell me that.
The warrant article...
And your, and your Selectmen sat here and told me it's not required.
The first time I am aware of that it appeared on a town meeting warrant was after I convinced my two colleagues to put it on the warrant...
Right.
With the, all three of them.
Sure. And this was signed at that point?
And I assured them, it had, all three of them had been signed by the board prior to that town meeting.
Yes.
Because everything that I looked at when I came on board in 2015 indicated to me, they're not valid without a town meeting vote.
Okay.
I'm the person who convinced my colleagues, after quite a period of time, one night sitting here, live, on camera, to put them on the warrant, and I would be the person who would get up and make the proposal.
Sure.
The, the motion, and if I got it seconded, I would continue. Mrs. Borogad was at that meeting as a resource. The first one came up, I explained it, answered the questions. If Carol was called on, she responded. It went to a vote, it passed. When the next one was called, I didn't have sufficient information. I wasn't even sure who owned it at that point. It got tabled, and that happened to the second one. Now...
I agree with everything you're saying.
The authorization to negotiate expired. We had to get another town meeting vote to allow the board to negotiate, which is what we've been attempting to do.
I completely agree with everything you're saying, but that all happened after this was signed, okay? And this document was relied upon, significant economic commitments were made based upon this document, and I'm here to tell you tonight, I am authorized to make changes to this, okay, to meet your requirements, that it excludes perp, personal, um...
Real estate.
Real estate taxes, to do whatever you need in that regard, so long as the combined amount doesn't exceed what's already exist, exists. And I'm not just making that up. That's in the agreement.
But without a town meeting vote, you don't have an agreement. That's our position.
All right, and that's why...
So, that's why the lawyers will argue.
Yes, that's right. That's what I'm saying.
All I will say to you is, there is no way that the dollar amount that's specified in there, because in effect, what you're saying is, the bulk of the money that's in that total is real estate, and the personal property tax is the balance, the residual amount, and the answer is no. As a matter of fact, I spoke to one of the members of the board at the time and said to him, "Just tell me, what do you think the town was getting from that pilot agreement?" He said, "We're getting, the arrangement is to cover personal property. What did you do about real estate?" He says, "It doesn't include real estate."
Says it in the very first sentence, and it says it many times in the agreement.
All I'm saying to you is, this gentleman was one of the signatories to that agreement.
They knew what they were doing, it was negotiated in good faith, we presented data from other towns, personal property and real estate, we showed it to them, they checked it, they called Berkeley, they made phone calls, they confirmed and satisfied themselves that they were getting a good competitive rate in bringing tax dollars into the town of Dayton. That's really what they were trying to accomplish, and they did it. My two projects between these fees and our permitting fees, which were astronomical, are gonna bring over a million dollars of taxes into this town, and the town has to do nothing to earn it. That's what those, that Board of Selectmen was looking at, and they did do an arms-length job of negotiating.
Well, I think, I think when you say the town doesn't have to do anything to earn it, the problem I have with that statement is, number one, the property owner is getting the burden of this whole tax agreement dumped on him, and you're getting practically a free ride. That was not the intent.
No, that, that's not the case. There's, the economics are different for every deal, every deal, okay?
If you take the number in there, right now, how much money does that say the town of Dayton will receive?
I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding, okay? The main reason for, for pilot agreement is in order for SOLA to work, and we're, we're experts in this, okay? In all, in order for SOLA to work, if you tax the personal property, and then you tax the real estate as a commercial rate, it's no longer feasible. It doesn't work.
Well, that's not true, because we've got solar energy projects coming out of our ear, and we only have free, free pilot agreements.
So, they're profitable for somebody.
So, that's not true.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It depends on financing for the people who propose it. So, let's erase that.
It does, and I'll explain to you that from SREC 1, back five years ago, they were much more lucrative, okay? Everything's changed, it's all been squeezed down. The current programs don't allow for it. The state, the state of Rhode Island currently has a statewide pilot program. It's $5,200 a megawatt flat across the whole state, both real estate and personal property, okay? They're doing that to be competitive and to make sure that projects will be built, okay? Many towns have done the same thing here in Massachusetts, in order so that they can go forward.
But there are other communities that won't touch a pilot agreement.
Can I ask a silly question?
I can't speak to that. When I negotiate...
Well, we can because we've looked into it.
But when I negotiate with Dayton, it included the whole thing.
Okay, I want, excuse me just a minute. You didn't answer my question.
Sure.
What is the annual payment right now under that agreement?
Roughly $17,000.
All right, 17 and change.
So, how does 17,000 times 20?
Wait a minute, excuse me, Brad, excuse me. What's the real estate taxes on that property?
The real estate will probably be around 15 to 20.
As commercial, it's been sitting on the tax rolls as Chapter 61A, collecting, paying practically nothing.
But I've said this right from the very beginning, we had that very first meeting, Rob, when we were in Lincoln Village, and I stood up and, and I was all for these SOLA agreements, but I said, "Right from the very beginning, it does not include real estate. I cannot assess somebody the tax bill for property that they don't own." Right from the very beginning, I don't...
The, the whole point is that it goes away. The tax bill is gone, all right, for that portion of the property.
So, how do I justify somebody having 38 acres of land, but now they're only getting taxed for 20?
Because there's a pilot agreement that carves out the balance of it. That's the whole point of the pilot. It's to make SOLA feasible so that it can be developed with cost certainty.
But it still has to be feasible for the town.
The concept of the pilot agreement is to help the company who's proposing it with their financial arrangements.
I disagree.
Stability, that's why you do payments instead of taxes.
And to make it economically feasible. These two properties were...
For who, Mr. Lucini?
For the, for both, to benefit the town as well as the developer, okay?
The town is not, the town is losing thousands of dollars in real estate taxes.
I completely disagree. The Kingsley property, 86, 86 acres, okay, was on the tax rolls for a long time, 61A was paying almost nothing.
Because it was chapter land.
Chapter land, and that's all it's ever gonna be. If it was developable as houses, it could be turned into house lots, which is another story, bring kids into the schools and all that problem, but if it...
Oh, no, it was...
But if it was, if it was, Mr. Kingsley would've dealt with that a long time ago. He would've sold it to a developer, but he didn't, because it was wet, okay? The land is wet. That's why it took us 86 acres to be able to build only a four and a half megawatt array, but we squeezed it in there.
But you're leaving out the part about Mr. Kingsley paying the back taxes on that when it came out of the chapter.
I paid it.
Well, wait a minute. It was Mr. Kingsley's obligation to pay the taxes.
But I paid it.
That's fine. Deal the same way with his real estate taxes, because...
And that sounds like the arrangement the previous person made with the private agreement to do the real estate, you know, internally.
When we, when we negotiated this, and we calculated the whole project economics, I factored into it that I would be paying real estate taxes, the penalty to take it out of 61A. That was part of my calculation. My calculation included $17,000 a year for this one, and about three times that for the Kingsley property, or two times that, okay? And that's how, if you add those together, that's how it adds up, because the Kingsley's a lot bigger than this. The point is, if you ask Ms. Borogad, "What were those two properties paying in total for taxes?", next to nothing. Now, the town's gonna get a million dollars over the next many years because of the pilot.
Except that now it has come out of chapter, and it is commercial, it's worth a lot more.
Only because of the SOLA.
But by the same token, that is what changed the equation, and that document is what should be treating the property owner and the town of Dayton fairly, and it's not.
But if you, if you, if your Selectmen drew a line four or five years ago with me, and they said, "We're going to assess you at a commercial tax rate, and we're going to charge you a, a, a full personal property tax, whatever it is," I said, "Thank you very much," and I moved on to another town, okay? It's not, it wasn't, wasn't gonna be economically feasible. That's why we do the pilots.
I understand that.
We would've moved on. They didn't do that. They said, "No, bring SOLA here, Dayton wants SOLA. We want these million dollars worth of taxes." I remember one of the Selectmen saying, "That's how we're gonna pay off the bond for in addition to the elementary school. We want this million dollars, please come." I said, "Okay, let's negotiate, let's negotiate in good faith." They made calls around, I gave them data from other towns, and we came up with a combined personal property, real estate, the document reads that way, there's nothing in here that says anything otherwise." And then it goes on to say that if for any reason, any reason at all, it's later determined that real estate taxes should not be included, that the total amount of the combined will not exceed what's agreed here. I'm not making that up, it's in the document.
I know what you're saying. What I'm saying to you is, it's not a valid agreement, because it was never voted and accepted by the people of the town of Dayton.
So, that's, that's where I would, I would respectfully request that we put a meeting together between your Town Council and the Town Council for NRG and John Hancock, and their council, and let them make that decision, and then, 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 then we'll know how to deal with this going forward, because there's nothing else I'm authorized to do tonight.
And I don't, quite frankly, um, before I answer, before I say that, um, since this is an open public meeting, is anyone, does anyone else in this room wanna weigh in or offer any kind of an opinion on the discussion that's taken place so far? I don't wanna put anyone on the spot, but if anyone has any thoughts on this, now's the time to speak.
I have one.
Mr. Pius?
Just thinking, granted they signed the document, and I understand where you're coming from, and, and I've experienced several things over the years when people sign documents. If it's in violation of any rule, reg, or...
State law or anything else.
Then it's not valid, it's not, no matter who signs it, if it violates a law or regulation, it's not valid.
And I'm saying, and I'm saying respectfully that, that the attorneys for these big companies have looked at that, and they don't believe that it was a law. They believe that there was a guidance thing put out there, suggestions, as the SOLA rules and laws were being formulated and evolving, there was some guidance, and it got tighter and tighter and tighter, and eventually it got to where you are right now. But back five years ago, that's not where it was. And that's why they're saying to me that they wanna sit down with you, because they've gone through this, and they'll be glad to meet with your attorney, because otherwise it's just, we're wasting time here, it's frustrating each other.
Now, I'll address, now, I'll address that. There is no way I see any need to meet with Town Council to discuss this, because I'm telling you right now, the people in this town will not vote to approve these, because I will be the one that gets up there and makes the motion, and if it's seconded, I will explain to them what that number means, and how, from what, everything I can find, as I said, I was not a party to the negotiations. I got into this when I came back to the board and found out, we got a problem, okay? I can't imagine anyone sitting out there tonight, including the property owners that, that are involved with these, and probably the gentleman that's already got the arrangement on the first approved one...
It's very small, it's a whole different story.
Sitting back saying, "No, it's not."
It's still a pilot, the, it's the same name, same contract.
One of the first things I wanna remind you about, everyone who has come in here, whether it's pilot agreement, SOLA farm, or just plain old SOLA farm, every company who has come in and has been permitted to build one, has been treated exactly the same by the town of Dayton, as far as, for example, licensing fees. It's a flat rate per panel...
I know, we've paid it.
Across the board.
We've paid it.
Yours is a big one, and yours was a big number.
Yes.
That's part of the fair process. What we know now is, with the one pilot we had approved at town meeting, the owners of that have found and evidently feel that, that regulation, that directive, whatever you wanna call it, from DOR is strong enough, because he also threatened legal action. He also wanted to talk to Town Council. And I said to them, "Town Council cannot, I'll say, overrule a DOR reg, okay? We've met with other communities, some with agreements, some who say, 'We won't touch them.'" And they've got like eight or nine in their town, the one I'm thinking of. But in any case, one of them was a large, a very large city that's only got one, because they won't deal with them either. But the fact of the matter is, since I came on board and got involved with this whole situation, everything that we have tried to do is treat everyone the same and everyone fairly. What you're asking us to do would be beneficial to you, but totally unfair to that approved project we have.
That's correct.
And what that gentleman has arranged with that landowner.
I can't speak to that.
And if I vote, the town meeting, it's factual, there's no, no...
There's no discussion.
It's factual. If this went to town meeting tonight, and I made the motion and it was seconded, I would have to say to the people of the town of Dayton, "When this was negotiated, the Selectmen thought they were gonna collect full taxes on personal property, which is the responsibility of the owner of the farm, and full commercial real estate taxes, which are the responsibility of the property owner." The property owner, who in effect also was responsible for the rollback taxes when it came out of chapter into commercial. Now, what we know is, the, the developer reimbursed that gentleman for his rollback taxes. That's fine. That's an agreement between the developer and the property owner. But the way that this pilot agreement is written, ladies and gentlemen, the real estate taxes will come off of the 17,000, so we'll get our, our commercial real estate tax. We are not going to get the full personal property tax. Therefore, ladies and gentlemen, I'm telling you right now, tonight, vote this down. That's what I would have to present to the people. Because I know the ins and outs of this now because I've spent so much time on it. If anyone can come up with something, we don't think that DOR thing is right. My response to that is, in this state, DOR is like the IRS at the federal level. If they tell us to do it and stand on our heads when we have to do it, we're going to do it, okay? So, what I would say to you is, to bring town council in, to meet with their attorneys, it's going to be a group of attorneys arguing about something. And unless somebody can show us that there has been a change or there is-
That's what we'll do.
It's invalid.
We will show you what existed in 2015, the guidance. Because that's when this was signed. That's what's relevant, not today. It's 2015.
But what I'm saying to you is, okay, the solar projects that we have checked into are older than this.
I, I, I can't speak, I don't know what you've looked at.
That's my point.
Okay. I don't know what you've looked at, okay?
But the position, I'm the one who said, I want to take it to town meeting. I'm the one that my two colleagues gave me permission to take it to town meeting, to sell it to the voters. They approved one. I told them, table the others, we're not ready. That's what happened. Knowing what I know right now from looking into it, knowing the discussions that took place on the proper way even to bring it to a town meeting, there is no way that I can do anything other than what I just told you.
Okay, I understand. We will, we will try and work with you to determine if this is a binding agreement or not. That's the starting point, okay?
And I just, I just want to say one other thing. To go back to what Mr. Pius said, every contract, every agreement, anything you have, that clearly indicates, if there is anything contrary to law, statute, whatever, it's null and void. The parts of the agreement that are still valid, don't get changed. But that was one of the points we made to the gentleman that came in here, who was unhappy with the approved pilot agreement the first time. That gentleman was from out of state, but he told us he had an office in, I think it was Marlboro. And I said to him, because he said he was going to get his lawyers involved, and I said, if you have an office in Marlboro, before you hire more lawyers-
Yes.
Have your office staff get in touch with the DOR right here in Massachusetts because that's whose rules we have to follow. And that's all I'm saying to you tonight. Going to a town meeting and asking for approval? I am certainly not going to recommend anything that I think the DOR has already told us. I'm not going to go and do something against their instructions.
So, I'd like to address the issue you just mentioned about invalidity, something that's partially invalid, okay? Because, you know, there's a lot of people watching this. They probably think I may be making this stuff up. Why I would stand here and say that the total amount of personal property plus now assessed commercial taxes would not agree, exceed the amount that's agreed here, okay? So, this agreement that your selectmen signed, when they knew, because it clearly states it and negotiated, included real estate and personal property taxes, they knew that, okay? Section 10, partial invalidity, if for any reason it is ever determined that this agreement applies only to personal property and not to both personal property and real property, that's, that's what we're arguing about here, then this agreement will be deemed to apply only to personal property and the town will there be, will thereafter be entitled to assess and tax the property in accordance with GLC 59 and GL 60. The developer will be entitled to challenge such assessment and taxes in accordance with mass law, with the parties having all rights of a town and taxpayer with regard to such taxes. Here's the key point. Under such circumstances, this agreement will not apply to such real estate taxes and the payments in lieu of taxes under this agreement will be decreased by the annual